All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order tonight, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome. Roll call, Mr. Schubert.
Allen?
Yes.
Oden? Comper? Saxer? Schroeder?
Here.
Thank you. With that, if there are no changes that need to be made on the agenda tonight, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? I opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. There are no conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests tonight. I don't believe there's any community input tonight, so that takes us to administration reports. Superintendent Larson, for your superintendent's report, please.
Yes, thank you, Adam Chair. Couple of things to report on tonight. First and foremost, wanted to give you guys an update on our fall enrollment for the purpose of state aid count. This year, we have 4,250 students. That count is official as of the last Friday in September. I would note for previous year information or prior information, last year, we had 4,057 students. So it was a growth of approximately 193 kiddos. If you would recall my original report back in the first meeting in August, I estimated approximately 175 kids. So we had about 20 students enroll between the start of school and the last Friday in September. So great news, growing enrollment, approximately 193 new kiddos this year. Our Facility Review Committee continues its work. I would tell you that at previous meetings, we've held two previous meetings. We reviewed our current school data, district information, reviewed current facilities and capacities, reviewed residential growth and student growth in Brandon Valley School District. In addition to that, we've analyzed elementary building sites that we currently have and those locations that we have available, the two sites that we have available. I would note that we have an upcoming meeting here on Wednesday. It is our third meeting. It is scheduled for Wednesday, October 24th. What's up?
We did baby electric.
Yeah, we did baby electric. Paul leaves for a couple of days to kiss some dicks and everything goes downhill. So at our third meeting, which is coming up this Wednesday, we'll have a school finance overview. Business Manager Lundberg will be there to provide an overview regarding capital outlay, school bond, elections, those types of things. In addition to that, we will review our analysis of the building sites that we have available to us. One is obviously on the southwest end of our district, 41st and Sparta, and the other is on the east side of Brandon. We conducted a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to success last meeting, and we'll review that analysis. And then we'll also discuss the timeline of a new elementary building and exactly how all of that will work in the coming years. And then we will also discuss long-range planning and our 20-year growth vision. I'd tell you that the purpose of that Facility Review Committee is very clearly to develop non-binding facility recommendations to the Board of Education and also develop a 20-year growth vision for the Brandon Valley School District. I tentatively plan on having a final report of that committee's work to this board by our second meeting in November. For our parent-teacher conference, huge thank you to our parents and guardians for their active participation in their child's education and engaged adult matters and active participation matters. Also, a giant thank you to our teachers for taking the evening to engage with our parents. And then I also want to thank our administration for the innovative ways that they've come up with to engage our parents. I received some information regarding our post-secondary fair at the high school, but I'm going to leave that to our high school administration to share out, potentially add our good news report here in the coming months. They can share with you kind of how that looked. And then on that note, I believe we are still on target to have a career and work fair, career fair, work fair type of event at our second parent-teacher conference within the high school, which would be second semester. Parent-teacher conferences at the high school. I also anticipate our intermediate school continuing their student showcase practice second semester. So a couple items to look forward to at future conferences, but want to just thank our parents and guardians, our teachers, and our administration and staff for their active participation and engagement through the parent-teacher conference process. Also want to note that the 2019-20 academic school year calendar is currently in development. The initial draft has been created. Our Administrative Council, Teacher Liaison Council, and Classified Council reviews that draft and provides feedback. Tentative adoption for you or tentative timeline for you to be aware of is you'll receive an initial presentation at our first meeting in January and then potential approval or action at our second meeting in January. One item I did just want to note, due to a bus driver shortage, we have utilized charter buses on a few occasions over the course of the last month that we typically would send a yellow bus on. So I just want you to be aware of that as you pay attention to the bills through the financial process at the first meeting of the month. You may see a few more charter bus usage fees associated with that. I also would tell you that it gives us a great opportunity to let folks know if anyone is interested in employment within our Transportation Department, apply online at our district webpage and you can sign up. Certainly, the Brandon Valley School District does not discriminate, and we also require background checks. So if you're interested, we do have a bus driver shortage. Also, an item I want to make the board aware of is we have birth certificate requirements. So in accordance to state law, parents and guardians are required to provide a birth certificate within 30 days of enrollment to the school. If they don't, ultimately, the school district provides notice to the state's attorney that a birth certificate has not been received, and then it becomes a state's attorney item. So just want you to be aware that if we have not received a birth certificate, parents will be receiving that communication in the near future. Our school accountability data for last year, I previously reported that it was delayed. The Department of Education indicated it was going to be early December. I would tell you that that's been bumped to late November, so it's been bumped up a little earlier. And I would just tell you that we are currently in the pre-appeal window. So right now, our administration is evaluating our report card, looking at graduation rates, individual students that maybe are identified as not having graduated or whatnot. Attendance data, they review that data, and ultimately, we are allowed to appeal anything that we find that is not correct until the 29th. And then after that, it becomes a formal appeal. The tentative public release is November 19th, which does not fit very well as far as board meetings for us. It's like the third Tuesday or Wednesday. So what you will get is you will get the state of the schools address at the second meeting in November. So November 26th, we'll provide a state of the schools address regarding all of our accountability data that we have to share. In addition to that, I would note that the ACT data was just recently made public. Overall, kids tested extremely well. I included some of that information in my Supps On column for this week. Detailed overview of the ACT data will be included in the State of the Schools address. Overall, above the state and national average in all areas. We exceed the college readiness in every area by 10% or more. Ultimately, our kids are performing extremely well. So that data was just publicly released Monday or Tuesday of, or Thursday of last week. I'm sorry, but you'll get a detailed overview of that ACT data at the State of the Schools address at the BV meeting on November 26th. Couple of upcoming items to note. We have no school for Veterans Day on November 12th. November 21st through the 23rd, there'll be no school for Thanksgiving break. That is Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. December 21st, we'll have a two-hour dismissal. And then our winter break will run from December 21st through January 1st. School resumes on January 2nd. With that, I will certainly entertain any questions you may have at this point on that.
Dr. Larson, just a question or clarifying that charter bus usage. Is that day-to-day busing and activity and some activity busing also?
Great question. Thank you for making me clarify. It is activity busing only. So for example, and I'm going to look out into the audience to make sure that I'm correct. In the past, we would use one of our school buses to travel to, say, Watertown for a volleyball event. Well, the Watertown activity aligned with our bus driver shortage, we utilized a charter bus to go to Watertown for the activity, and we kept our own buses at home on our designated school routes for before and after-school services. So yes, the charter bus usage is solely for the activity purposes. Make sense?
Yep.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay, with that, I wanted to note school improvement plans. I would tell you that this year, we have kind of a unique set of circumstances surrounding our school improvement plans. To be quite frank, you need accountability data to develop your school improvement plan. The accountability data was delayed, so we're looking at a situation like we're not going to have finalized accountability data until the middle of November. My direction to our administration was we still needed to engage in a school improvement planning process. Even though we didn't have the most up-to-date, real-time data to use, we still needed to utilize all the data that we had and the preliminary data that we had so that we can plan for success and growth for this school year. I felt like the end of November and December was too late to be looking at achievement data. So what you have before you are fluid documents that will be updated with achievement data as achievement data becomes readily available. So some of the graphs and the information in these school improvement plans includes data from the '16-'17 school year as opposed to the '17-'18 school year. Now, we are also able to identify trends over the course of years. For example, I'm going to use informational text because that almost always seems to be an area that is one of struggle to, you know, schools. We identified that and we go through the school improvement planning process. So we engaged in that process in October, correct? At our in-service October, that's designated our school improvement planning meetings. We utilize that, and those documents and school improvement plans will be updated as information is finalized. But we didn't want to wait as long as we were going to have to wait to start those conversations. With that, any questions on school performance index, school improvement plans for this coming year?
Thank you very much, Superintendent Larson. Board policy, I don't believe we have any of that tonight either. So that takes us to our first item under General Business, the informational presentation regarding the 2019-20 Fred Assam Elementary Boundary Line Proposal. There is no action on this one tonight, just information.
Absolutely correct. Well. All right, what do I need to do? Is that what I got going? This is going to work just fine. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about our elementary boundary line proposal for next school year. I would note that the two elementaries that are impacted by the proposed boundary line change are Fred Assam Elementary and Brandon Elementary. So I do want to note that the rationale is very clearly defined within our strategic plan. Very simply, as outlined in our strategic plan, we want to work to effectively maximize usable classroom space. We want to proactively manage student growth, and we also want to operate in a fiscally responsible manner. I'll try this. Maybe I'm not. So with that, key components of this proposal. Number one, we want to minimize student impact, and we want to also establish boundaries that align to future growth. So when we talk about minimizing student impact, I want to share a couple of the strategies that will be included within that component. First, we want to allow third-grade students that are currently at Fred Assam to remain at Fred Assam for their fourth grade year. So ultimately, their open enrollment is grandfathered in. In addition to that, we want to allow all family members of the third-grade student to remain at Fred Assam Elementary. So for example, if a third-grade student has a second-grade sibling as they grow into the 19-20 school year, that fourth grader is allowed to stay, but then also their sibling is allowed to stay at Fred Assam as we don't want to split families and have them go in two different directions to two different elementaries. So that is an example that I would note. I would also note that we will process all other open enrollment requests as outlined in Board Policy. So for example, if my residence is in the Brandon Elementary boundary and I would like to attend Fred Assam Elementary, I submit my in-district open enrollment request, and then we process just as we would any other in-district open enrollment request. And then another key item to note is open enrollment transportation fees apply as outlined in Board Policy. We have, currently, we have, if you live in your, if you are transported from your residence to your school, your resident elementary, and you are inside of five miles, the fee is $75. If you're outside of five miles, transportation is free. But if you open and roll to a different elementary, the fee is higher for that, and there is no family maximum. So I would tell you that open enrollment transportation fees apply as outlined in policy. Another key component is we want to establish boundaries that align to our future growth. So where we do that, we evaluate our residential growth areas. I would tell you that we have worked very hard on that front, especially with our Facility Review Committee process, evaluating residential growth within the Brandon Valley School District, including the city of Sioux Falls within the Brandon Valley School District. So that's a key component to the proposal. We also want to consider future school building locations and how the boundary change fits within the development of new schools. So we don't want to just think about what this is going to do to two schools. We want to think about what this will look like when we have three or four schools potentially being impacted by the proposal. So that's a critical item to consider as well. And then lastly, we want to establish long-lasting school boundary lines. You know, this last boundary line proposal ultimately lasted 10 years, give or take. So a substantial amount of time. So that allows families to plan, and it is for their convenience to have long-lasting school boundary lines. So the proposed elementary boundary line change. Ultimately, what the proposal does is it extends the Brandon Elementary Boundary Line east. So my little red dot right there is on Holly or Rice Street. And basically, it extends Holly and Rice Street all the way west, and then everything north of that becomes Brandon Elementary. So combining those two chunks of our school district into the Brandon Elementary Boundary Line. A couple of items to note. Prior to Fred Assam being built, the proposed area was in the Brandon Elementary Boundary. That's where those kiddos would have gone to school had Fred Assam not ever come into existence. That's where they were already going. Another item to note is that the Fred Assam Elementary Boundary, so if you look at the Fred Assam Elementary Boundary going from the furthest south point to the furthest north point of our district, covering almost the entire west side of our school district, I would tell you that the reason that Fay's original boundary was created the way it was was because of the necessity of kids. There was limited residential growth in that area, limited number of homes. Ultimately, they had to create a boundary that was this big to put approximately 250, 275 kiddos at the Fred Assam Elementary. So that's another important item to note. Through our Facility Review Process, I would tell you that I have evaluated our school district growth. And when we evaluate our school district growth, of all the new students in the Brandon Valley School District, 41% of new student enrollment came from the green. Okay? 41% of the new student enrollment came from the green. And over the course of the weekend, I spent a little bit of time, and I'm almost certain that of that 41%, approximately 80% of that 41% is occurring south of 41st Street. So a strong majority of that new growth is occurring south of Holly. I apologize, where the boundary line is proposed. So majority of that growth is coming from down in that general vicinity. So that's certainly important information to know. With that, any questions on the boundary line proposal or the boundary line proposal like where I am going to be recommending the line in of itself to be? Everyone understands where Holly and Rice is extending west? Okay. Very good. So just want to provide you with an update which helps provide reasoning and rationale to the situation. Currently, Fred Assam has 558 students, and that actually might be, we might be a 560 or 561. That may have changed today, so I'm not exactly sure. But that's the most recent number I had as of last week. So when we look at our capacity, we have 558 kiddos at Fred Assam Elementary, a capacity of approximately 600, with a 93% utilization rate. Okay? So how did we get to 558? I'll share with you how you got to 558. So back in 2009, when you opened, you had approximately, you had 250 kiddos. And then you can see the student growth at Fred Assam Elementary from '09 up to our current number of 558. You will see a big decrease in your student enrollment right here, and that's when Brandon Valley Intermediate School opened. So the fifth grade was ultimately removed out of the elementary. So as you can see, when you calculate it out, 40 to 50 kids approximately annually, some years a little more, some years a little less, but that's approximately what we can guess. So with the number currently being at 560, you're, you know, you're one year away from being at that 600 mark probably, and then the next year, you'll be over that number. Now, the Facility Review Committee is currently engaged in the work that we're engaged in, and this is all a component of what we are considering. So I guess what I'm telling you is that this is, the student growth and the residential growth in that area of our district is what's causing the necessity for the boundary line change as we work to maximize our usable classroom space. So with that, now just a little glimpse of Brandon Elementary, high-level overview. 950 student capacity. So again, when we talk about capacity, we talk about number of available classrooms times number of kids in a classroom, you come up with your student capacity number. In this elementary situation, the number is 25, students per classroom. Number of classrooms, 950 capacity. I would note that I am not recommending or suggesting that we operate a 900-student elementary. We have. The Brandon Valley School District, historically speaking, has had a lot of students at Brandon Elementary at one time or another throughout our existence as a district, but I'm not recommending that we run at that 900 mark, more so that 700, give or take, a few, mark. So when we look at the current Brandon Elementary enrollment, we have 579 students at Brandon Elementary with a 61% utilization of that facility. The breakdown of 579, 540 of those students are junior kindergarten through fourth grade, and then 579 of those, or 579 students includes early childhood education, which is the three-year-old to five-year-old range, special education programming. I think it's important to note that because we utilize Brandon Elementary as a centralized facility for the purpose of a district-wide program like junior kindergarten. So I do want to talk about a unique nuance to the situation. Our English learner program, formerly known as English Language Learners, is currently operated out of the Fred Assam Elementary. Okay? Our EL staff, K-12, has two certified teachers and two education assistants. The last number I had was, we had 35 EL students eligible for funding. When I talk about eligible for funding, so an English language student, English learner student receives 1.25 in the terms of per people funding for the purpose of general fund. So to make it simple, if you get $5,500 per student, if you think about it like that, an EL student gets 1.25 times $5,500 some odd dollars. It equates to about $1,000, give or take, little more, 1,200. So when we talk about the number of students we have eligible for funding, we also have a number of students that aren't eligible for funding but are included within like the tracking of the program. So you don't receive funding for them, but they're like, they're check-in kids, for lack of a better phrase. Our teachers and our EAs would check in with them and make certain that they're still on track. Those kiddos are all identified as eligible for funding through an exam process or an assessment process. They take an assessment, and then they have to qualify for eligibility. So in the terms of our program, I would tell you we receive approximately $50,000 in additional funding within our state aid formula for that program, and we spend about $200,000 to meet the needs of that program. Okay? So I want you to note that it's currently based in the Fred Assam Elementary Boundaries. We will be working with our administration, our EL staff. Fay staff will have the opportunity to provide some input, and then also providing our EL parents specifically an opportunity to meet and discuss the situation as a whole. Quite simply, we are faced with, we are faced with a decision that is either operate one program within one elementary site or split the program into multiple sites. And there are strengths to one site, and there are... And there are, there are strengths to one site, and there are probably some drawbacks from one site and some of those things. So, I would tell you that we're currently working through, through the analysis of our options, and that will be a component of our recommendation. So, upcoming meetings, just so the board is aware, we'll be meeting with the Fred Assam staff and those individual Fred Assam staff members that would like to engage in a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats to one-site, two-site, and/or brainstorm other ideas. Thursday, October 25th, I have confirmed that date since last week with Principal Foster. In addition to that, I will be attending the Fred Assam PTA meeting on Tuesday, November 6th, there at Fred Assam. And then we have also scheduled and set up two specific meetings for our EL parents and guardians, excuse me, 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., and 7:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Thursday, November 8th. Our, our EL staff are assisting with the parent communications on those meetings to make certain that all individuals are aware. In addition to that, we'll hold a public hearing for, for input at the, here at the first regularly-scheduled Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, November 13th. That hearing will occur at 6:00 p.m. And then I expect tentatively to have a recommendation to you by the second meeting in November, could be pushed back to the first meeting in December pending how things come together. The thing that's critically important is that we make a decision with plenty of time to communicate to our, to our parents, and in addition, get feedback on who's planning on opening enrollment and/or requesting. Because I did not discuss staffing, because staffing will be necessary to take care of. Whether it's custodial, increased custodial staff, or increased nutrition staff, or increased teaching staff as you increase your student population, or increased administrative services, any of those types of things will be worked out once the numbers are more finalized and we're able to garner more information from, from the situation. I would tell you that I would plan on communicating directly to the families involved via letter and, once, once a decision has been made. So, that's ultimately the upcoming meetings that we have scheduled through the process. I would tell you that the proposal was announced in early, in early October, it was communicated via all parent and staff email, it was also included in the newspaper. You as a board were informed of the upcoming proposal at our first meeting in October, you're receiving information here tonight. Multiple parent meetings will be held, and then obviously, we'll give the public an opportunity to be heard on the proposal, the 13th, with again, a tentative recommendation date of the second meeting there in November. With that, I would certainly entertain any questions that you may have.
I have a quick question. The, the one-site versus two-site, if it's the one-site, what school would that be, or is that still up in the air?
Sure. So, ultimately, I would suggest that we evaluate utilizing Brandon Elementary as our centralized location for the EL program. For a variety of reasons. Number one, it centralizes the program within the district. Number two, it has the facility capacity, the classroom space available. And number three is it is a long-term solution to a continual situation. So, if we consider the Fred Assam Elementary as currently housing the EL program, and then we consider our options for future elementary sites, for example, tentatively, what I would tell you is, if you built, if you built east, that could have an impact, but if you build south, that will undoubtedly have an impact on your Fred Assam Elementary Boundary Line to the west. And as we evaluate our EL program, we look at our school district boundaries and identify where a majority of our EL students are located, and that Boundary Line will ultimately impact the EL population not attending Fred Assam, but rather an elementary to the south. So, that's another thing when I talk about minimizing impact on kids and families, it's minimizing multiple changes for the foreseeable future. So, those are all discussions to have, and will certainly garner input from, from, from a variety of stakeholders on that topic. But, the initial, the initial conversation, I have met with our EL staff specifically and looked at strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats regarding, regarding a one-centralized location versus two, and they have voiced, they have voiced their position on that, and we'll continue to work through that process and include it as a part of the formal recommendation here later in November. Certainly. Other questions? Any other information that you as the Board of Education would ask to be included or sought prior to a recommendation? And if you do happen to think of something, feel free to shoot me an email or let me know, and I can, I can do my best to provide that information.
Thank you very much. It's hard to believe that it was 10 years we made that change already, so. I would entertain a motion under General Business, Items 2 through 4, to approve those as written tonight, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second, all of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. We have, it looks like 11 items under Personnel tonight, or 10 items, I'm sorry, I can't count. I would entertain a motion to approve Items Numbers 1 through 10 as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second, all of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Items 11 and 12 are for information only there for you. Any communications? You can certainly look in the communication book if you have any questions. Formal board reports, does anyone have a formal board report that they would like to share tonight?
Madam Chair, I would just note that Member Saxor and I were able to attend a CTE and internship opportunity within the Yankton School District. They have a robust CTE and internship program, outstanding, outstanding resource. Dr. Kendall down in Yankton provided us with a lot of really great information as we continually work and evaluate that area of our programming. And I know that Principal Schleckley has a strong working relationship with their, their administration down there and has plans on also engaging in that tour and the communications with them regarding their internship and their CTE programming. In addition to that, we have a CTE experience scheduled, this November 6th and 7th. It is through the Department of Education is, or taking a regional, regional tour, regional experience over through Minnesota and some of their CTE and internship programs that they're running over in the state of Minnesota. So, look forward to providing additional information and updates on that as we investigate.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? We're still in the process of getting a Child Nutrition Wellness Committee date together. Otherwise, if there are no further reports, there are a couple of travel reports for your review there, and if that is all, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
There's been a first and a second, all of those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much for coming tonight.